Library complex for our town. You all hear me say right? Magnificent. Um, and we have the right people to be able to, hear our residents, be creative, and to help to produce something amazing and something that will outlast all of us and something that will be that bright spot to our town. I look at our new human services building and I'm like, you guys have a lot to follow, right? But Mark is here. He's gonna make sure. He's gonna make sure that we do a great job and that our library complex is gonna be amazing. So once again, thank you all for being here. As was stated, we only have two voting members that aren't present, which is Vedunzi Graham-Daze and Sarai Pirt. I'm assuming that Vedunzi will join us as soon as she can. Thank you to our liaisons. Thank you to our librarian and our library board members for being here on on this committee as well to be able to give some insight and some creative suggestions for us. I believe that everyone received a charge for the building committee. Everybody got it? Okay. I know that Nancy is doing a lot right now at the town. And once she gets a minute, she'll provide a booklet for everyone, a binder, that had some information from the previous building committee. But Ms. Lois Hagar is here and she's a wealth of knowledge of the previous building committee, so I think that's a great thing. I know that each of you bring expertise to the table, whether it's economic development, whether it's education, whether it's being on building projects before or even being on a library building committee in another town. Another town. Another town. Another town. See, he hasn't even gotten it yet, but it's okay.
I think he got it.
My head go down.
But I thank you all so very much. So after this meeting, then, you know, subsequent meetings, I'll just be an active participant. But it does give me great pleasure to be able to turn our meeting over. Okay. Before we do that, I'm gonna ask each person to please introduce yourselves. I'm going to start with Nancy, just in case. Nancy?
I'm Nancy Haynes and I'm the town's purchasing and risk manager. And I'll be the one who will be sending out the notices of the meetings. I'll be making you, you'll get a book like this, which will have documents in it. I think Lois and Mark may still have theirs, maybe not, from the last time. So I'll be your point of contact in the town as we go throughout this process. So it's nice to meet everybody.
So I'm just gonna go and order the way I see everybody on the screen. No disrespect or anything like that. The next person would be Ava.
I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the library. I have been a librarian for a very long time. My first library job was at a university in 1968, so I bring historical perspective and experience at different buildings and different kinds of libraries.
Thank you, Lois.
I'm Lois Hager. I live at Dunkester Road. I was on the prior building committee for the elementary schools and then on the library committee. I'm very, very pleased to get, be part of this again, because I think it's very important for the town to have a central place where we can all gather. My expertise, I've, my background is in public administration, but I've been involved in a lot of different committees in Bloomfield over the last thirty-five or more years. And I love this town and I want to leave something behind that really is beautiful for everyone.
Thank you, Leah.
Hi, my name is Leah Farrell and I am on the library board and I am also a librarian. I've been a librarian for about nine years and I currently work at the Wallingford Public Library.
Greg, thank you, Leah, Greg.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Davis, and I've been a resident of Bloomfield now for over twenty years. I worked for the Travelers as an in-house attorney. And I have been active primarily with the Hartford Public Library and their board for the last fifteen years. And I chaired that board for eight years and I'm the current chair. And very excited about this project. I love libraries and looking forward to working with everyone in the meeting.
Thank you. Maxine? You're mute. You're mute.
Thank you for muting me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maxine Ursery. I'm an educator. I've been an educator for twenty-plus years. I'm presently the Assistant Principal of International Magnet School in South Windsor. I'm also a newly appointed library board member and I've been a resident for eighteen-plus years. And I'm very excited to participate in this process.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, everybody. My wife and I have been in Bloomfield for twenty-six years. I am a licensed architect and my experience has been mostly in municipal work, although I've done a fair amount of historical work and construction management as well. I've served on the Wintonbury Golf Course Committee, Building Committee in town, the Metacomet and Oral School Building Committee, and the two thousand sixteen version of this committee. And presently, I'm still on the Human Services Facility Building Committee. We're just wrapping that one up. And I serve on the Design Review Board as well, the newly formed one last year. And my cat is trying to make a lot of noise, so I'm holding him. As an aside, I'm also chairing the Board of Directors at our fund. So nice to meet everybody.
Thank you, Michelle. Muted. You're muted, Michelle.
You gotta take your mask off.
Okay. Sorry about that. I tried to be polite. Anyway, I'm glad to be here. I have to say that I think I've met three of you at one point or the other. I'm a retired urban planner and I come to the table with extensive experience in site planning and land use. So I think this is a good place. I currently serve as Vice Chair of the Economic Development Commission. I serve with Mark on the Design Review Board and currently serving the mayor with regard to the COVID-19 reopen. So look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Lane. I am an information professional. I am the Director of Bloomfield Public Library. I have worked in libraries for almost twenty years, including public libraries, a university library, and an art library. I'm very excited to help bring a great building to Bloomfield that will truly serve all. Thank you.
Excellent. Jessie?
Hi, my name is Jessie White. I am a principal on assignment at Bloomfield High School. I've been in Bloomfield Public Schools as a teacher and administrator for, this will be my twentieth year. I do have three children who are also in Bloomfield Public Schools, ranging from the high school to the early childhood magnet school. And I'm very excited as a person who utilizes the library along with my children to be a part of a process that is going to pave the way for them in years to come.
Thank you all so very much. I'm so very excited. This is just a wonderful group. I must tell you that I do have three more appointments to make. And they are, it has to be Republicans, three Republican seats that I have to appoint. So that will be done hopefully before your next meeting. As I stated, that everyone has the charge for the building committee. I really, unless, unless it's the group's desire that I read this, I'm going to believe that you've all read it.
Yes.
So I don't have to read it.
And I'll have a copy of it in your notebooks as well.
Yes.
Thank you very much. One of the things that I do, I would like to say that I think is extremely important, and I know that it's in the charge, is the point that we get community engagement. I think it's gonna be really, really important that we have a series of their input, because they're going to be the ones to utilize it. That's the only thing that I'm really gonna really, really, really stand on the chair and beg him to make sure that it happens. With that being said, I would like to take this time to appoint the Chair for the Building Committee, Mr. Greg Davis. And then, I'm done. So, Mr. Davis, here's your meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we get going, Nancy, I'm getting text messages from Vedunzi saying that she can't get in and that the pass code won't allow her in. Is there any way we can email, she can't even call in, she says. She's getting a busy signal when trying to call in?
Not even our number. It's, I can forward her the information again.
So why don't I just move the meeting along while we do that? Suzanne, oh, Madam Mayor, thank you so much for the appointment. And again, I'm looking forward to working with this committee and everyone in town to make this process the best that we can have in Bloomfield. The agenda asks for an appointment of the Secretary and I have previously asked Mrs. Ava Bifford to be our secretary and she has agreed to do so. So Ava, thank you so much for that.
Can I interrupt for one minute? I think the secretary has to be somebody who's a voting member.
Has to be a voting member?
Yeah.
So can I ask a question? Can Ava be a backup?
I generally take the minutes.
Oh, okay.
So unless somebody else wants to volunteer, I'm kinda used to taking the minutes, but, and I've done that previously and I do it on the Public Works Building Committee as well, so it's really more of an oversight to make sure that I do file the minutes and, you know, in case I'm not available, somebody would step in. But, you know, what we might want to do, Chair, if you'd like, you don't have to necessarily appoint a secretary tonight.
Correct.
There's no reason why we have to. If you'd like some more time to, to think about that. I don't wanna have to put you on the spot if you don't want.
Yeah, I think we'll get back to the body with the appointment for Secretary.
Thank you, Nancy.
I have a question, Greg.
Yes.
And it's for Nancy as well. Will we have a hired recording secretary as we did on other building committees? In addition to you as then a backup? I don't know what our budget is for this phase of this project. The mayor is shaking her head no. So I guess we don't have any money for that.
I think the few pennies you have, you would want to. My heart is back.
It's not been an issue. Three Thirty Park at one point got so overwhelming that yes, it was such a large project that it did make sense to do that. I think maybe as we get further into that stage of the project, maybe we could reconsider it for the time being. I think it's manageable for me. If you don't like to, then that's fine. I mean, go look at my minutes. For, for the Public Works Fund, we never hired anybody at all, but that was, you know, half the price of Three Thirty Park.
And I've also chatted with Elizabeth, the director, and we've talked about having someone from the library staff available to participate and engage in minute and help along the process. Is it Elizabeth, remind me of, is it Chris?
Chris Silowack.
Who is not on the committee but will again be supporting us on behalf of the library staff. All right. Madam Mayor, a couple of items that we need to sort of talk about is our timeline and our budget, so that we can work within the timeframes of what has been set and also know what the budget is for the project, if there is one.
So, Mr. Chair, if we can circle back before your next meeting with Nancy, you, me, and Nancy will circle back with that, because I think that's gonna be a part of the the information that she gives, what the budget was of the previous project, what the previous project looked like, and using that as a jump-off point to see where we need to start from. But I believe building on it or building out from that, the budget that we had the last time may not be the budget that you all end up with this time. After looking at all the historical documents, I'm not sure what the the building specifications were. I'm not quite sure if there was anything else housed in the library besides the library. I'm hoping that we would be able to look at building in maybe a study center, maybe. I'm advocating for a juice bar, but I've been told that I can be selfish. But making it a complex, right? Because most libraries now is not just a single-use library. So I think once we start building out what that would look like for our community, I am sure it's going to impact whatever budget was set previously. And once again, we do have two individuals that were a part of that historical process.
Greg, may I?
Yes, yes, please, Mark.
I think the important question right now is, what is our budget to bring us to referendum? Because we're gonna need to engage an architect, possibly other professionals, other miscellaneous costs. So I think in terms of budget, we need to know what we have to spend between now and referendum.
So I will definitely get that number.
I have it actually.
Yes, ma'am.
It's fifty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Give or take, right?
Yeah, give or take. Town Council appropriated additional fifty thousand dollars last year and there was a slight balance left over from the previous project.
Also, Vedunzi has texted me. She's in the meeting as an attendee on the-
I got her. I'll get her.
All right.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Glad you got in.
Oh, boy, it was a task.
Welcome, Vedunzi. We just went through the process of introducing ourselves and you wanna take a couple of seconds to introduce yourself to the group?
Hi, my name is Vedunzi Graham-Daze. I've been a resident of Bloomfield since age eleven. For twelve years, my dad was a town councilman here. Currently, I am a part of the Bloomfield Democratic Committee. And I support this endeavor. My mother was a part of your initial committee with regards to the Library Building Committee. And so I look forward to continuing and building on what the initial committee started. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. And Madam Mayor, what about a timeline?
So I know, so I know that there's a lot of people that have been waiting for this building committee to breathe. However, I don't want us to rush the process, right? I know that there's an election next year. So if we're gonna get ready for referendum, there has to be a period of time where we get our information together, where we get our, all the groundwork done, where we can come before the residents and say, we need to engage an architect or something like that. So I think if we use that and work back from that, Mark? Does that make sense?
So you're, so we pencil in November of 2021 as a referendum date?
So-
Is that what you're suggesting?
That's my suggestion, but that's my suggestion sitting here looking this way. I'm sure there's other things that we need to take in. But to say that we can get an architect by that time, I think that should be feasible.
My feeling is that's more than adequate time to do a really good job on this.
And Lois?
My understanding is that we're done with the location issue, right? That took a lot of time for the last committee deciding what the location for the library should be. And my understanding is that we are settled on changing the existing site. Is that correct?
Well, it's my understanding that this is open. We haven't made any decisions or recommendations, I should say. And that's part of this process. We will come up with a location and a site. It could be existing, it could be somewhere else, but I think that's the charge of this committee. One of the charges, I should say.
Then I think we have to remember that that did take a great deal of time.
And to kind of piggyback on what she was saying, if you don't mind, Chairman.
Please.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I think that we should really pick up where they left off versus starting over from scratch. It looks as though next door to the location, the current location, they are working where Hyrum Lodge and the gas station used to be. And it's my understanding that the town purchased Riley Lumber to have the ability to expand the current location. So I think that that would be a great start versus exploring other locations.
I mean, I wanna leave that to the group. I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves here. I think we really need to sort of step back, do all the materials that were previously submitted, the schematics, the plan, and sort of go through it. But I think we would be premature in sort of trying to reach a resolution this evening as to what we're going to.
Okay.
I would agree with you, Greg, in that we can, we can very quickly come back up to speed with everything that's been done already. So it's not really starting from scratch. There's a lot of good information on paper and we can catch up with that really quickly and then fold in everything else that's happened in the last four years in town as well.
Can I, can I just say something? Going back, and you guys are gonna hear me say this a lot, so please just forgive me at this time. Jessie did have to leave. Please excuse me, I must go teach a class. It was a pleasure to meet you all and I look forward to working with you in the future. So please, I'm gonna just go back and you're gonna hear me say it a lot. Please, let's make sure that we get the input of our residents, of all our residents, before we start making those definitive decisions. I think it's important, and I say that because I've heard a lot. I've heard so much, and it's not just me, but the entire council have heard so much. If you go back to minutes from different meetings. So please, 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 when I'm, when I've asked to make sure that we get our residents involved in the process, hear them, invite them to the table before we make definitive decisions.
That's a good point. Good points, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. I'd like to hear from everyone in the meeting, but a couple of thoughts that I have, and I've had a conversation with Elizabeth, and my view is that our body will rely heavily on Elizabeth and her senior team for their guidance with respect to their expertise and local knowledge. I really want to make sure we capture the vision of the Director and of the town, but I think it's important that we incorporate our senior team at the library into this process and rely on their expertise. As the mayor mentioned, I think we're fortunate to have members of the Library Board of Directors who are quite knowledgeable in their own right. And I think that is going to be an added plus to this process. I'm very open and would like to do what the mayor talked about, is incorporating and engaging the community. I feel that we have an opportunity to have community forums, surveys, and making sure that they're broad-based and we're incorporating and getting an opportunity to hear from all of our residents. Because again, as has been reminded or told to me by the Director, we want to make sure that we're creating a space that is going to be opening and welcoming to all people in our town. So I think in order to do that, we need to sort of hear from all folks and try and incorporate that into our, our project. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to touch upon and then I really wanna open it up to the floor and set some schedules as far as how often we can meet or want to meet. But in looking at the charge and giving some thought, there were a couple of things that came to mind and obviously, we don't need to decide those tonight. But the charter, excuse me, not the charter, but the charge allows us to continue to work with the architects that were involved in the initial phase, TSKP. And at some point, I'd like to sit down with Mark and Lois and others who were involved in the previous process to kind of, you know, talk one-on-one and get your thoughts. But that is something that we need to decide upon relatively soon, I think. We talked about getting the previous plan, establishing a timeline and budget. Hopefully, we all have Bloomfield Public Library cards that are current. Elizabeth, thank you for making sure that mine is current. I think that's important. And I don't know about everyone on the phone, but I have not visited all of our branches recently. And I think throughout this process, I wanna make sure that we get an opportunity to visit both of our branches and get a feel for what's going on inside of each location. I think what might be helpful for this process, if we can, is to visit other construction in the state of Connecticut to see what the other towns and cities are doing with respect to library projects. I think we could gain a lot from doing tours. And I don't know how we can do it during COVID, but there may be ways in which we can make that happen. And I understand that, Leah, your library might be a place that we wanna take a look at. I've heard some really wonderful things about what you all have done. I've talked with Elizabeth about, and I wanna get the thoughts from the committee, maintaining a, an update on the Bloomfield Public Library webpage as to what the Building Committee is doing, a place where folks can go and see our minutes, see our agendas. I wanna get your thoughts, but I'd like to have a directory of all of our members on there, at least with pictures, so that people can see who we are and we can be held accountable. If people won't see us in town, they wanna ask questions, I think that's very helpful. But I don't want to have that happen unless, you know, people are comfortable with doing so. So maybe I'll stop there and ask, how do people feel about that? Muted. Lois, you're muted, and Leah, I'm in.
That's fine. Good idea.
Just quietly nodding, yeah.
If I can say, there is currently a Library Building Committee page on the town's website. It's under the town council, since it is an appointment of the council, a committee of the council. And that's normally where we post, where we actually require to post all the agendas and the minutes. I don't have pictures up there, but normally we do maintain the list of all of the people who are on the building committees, whether they be voting members. We also include the ad hoc people that are on there. You know, Elizabeth might wanna do something a little bit more than that. You know, with pictures, I'm not sure how picturesque we can get with our webpage. Her page seems to be a lot more flexible. So maybe she and I can work together on maybe a little bit of a division of labor, where hers is more user-oriented and the town's one is a little bit more of the legal requirements.
Okay. Sounds good. So is anyone opposed to having, you know, a member page? Or their information picture up on the? I've been snap-shooting everyone tonight, so the pictures from tonight.
Hey, hey, wait, wait. I already have mine. There, I got mine.
Greg, one comment on what you said. I think as a committee, we need to be very careful about what we present to the public outside of meetings. And if we're approached as individuals, most times in practice, well, especially with- most times in practice, well, especially with the press, the committees have been diverting everything to the chair as opposed to having 12 different ideas of what's going on out there among the public. I just think we need to be careful when individuals stop us in the grocery store. You know, we don't want to be spreading one idea versus another. So, you know, a unified voice is very, very important, especially since we're trying to get consensus on this eventually.
I agree. That was on my list as far as, you know, communications and how we should handle that. It would be my preference that we direct it to one or two people so that we're not publicly going online or in the newspaper or on TV making comments. But I do think that there is something for maintaining some accountability so that people know, you know, who's involved in the process, not just seeing a name, but placing a face with the name. And I think that will force me to step my game up a little bit. That's why I think it might be helpful. But if it's the feeling of the body that we shouldn't do it, then I'm okay with that as well.
Can I just endorse what Mark said? I do, anything with more than one head is a monster. And because everyone is looking at this project or probably want to get some information about the project, and some of us might be really excited. If the committee hasn't made a decision about something, it shouldn't be discussed. And I do believe that there should only be one point person, so that everyone's not giving their thoughts and feelings. So I do agree with Mark in that regard. I believe it's important for people to know who's on the committee. So I think just a list, if you want to put pictures up there, that's fine. But I think communication should be very intentional and thoughtful. And I'm sure when the committee is called before the council, I know it's going to be Nancy and the committee chair. So we probably just want to keep that, you know, as the chain of command or structure right now.
Okay. All right. And I know that I've been doing a lot of talking. I want to hear from our leader or our library director, Elizabeth. Can you share with the group sort of, you know, what your vision is with respect to the project and a new site possibly?
We are focusing on making the library as accessible as possible and breaking down all barriers to use. For me, the number one thing that we need to focus on is creating a building that is attractive to all, is welcoming, is as transparent and as easy to access as possible, that is welcoming, that helps our service to the public as much as possible. So for me, that is more important than anything else. So the location piece, to me, is really secondary to that. How do we address the access issue first? We have noted that the number of Bloomfield residents that have library cards has declined greatly, specifically over the last five years. And we are hoping that this building project, combined with a more intentional approach to being welcoming, will have more people coming into our building, using our resources, and acknowledging the wealth of information and services available to them with access to Bloomfield Public Library. I also think that part of this conversation is the fact that we have McMahon-Wittenberry Library, and that is just as important in this equation in terms of access. Each location, and we have three locations. We have Prosser Library, McMahon-Wittenberry, and then everything that is online. And each location has different things that reach different people. And I would just hope that as we move forward with that, we continue to think about the great many patrons that may not know about Bloomfield Public Library and how to get us on their radar. And having a building that makes people want to enter it, and having a space that makes people want to stay and makes people feel welcome is of utmost importance.
Great. Thank you, Elizabeth. Michelle, please.
Well, it's an interesting conversation thus far. And I would say, one thing that I have noticed is that nothing makes you appreciate the services you have in your town more than when they go away. And I even called the library to see if my stack of books, which is falling over, could be accepted. Made me think about a lot of things with regard to the library and how much we appreciate it. Having said that, I would say that it's very important, with the information that we have had for the first iteration of a library proposal, and any new information that we would have, that everybody make a commitment to really look at all of it with a very open mind. Because in coming here this evening, I thought about that a lot and thought, well, you know, everybody has their ideal of what they would like to see and what their favorite thing is. But my goal personally is to, in everything that I do, try to assure that we're going to get the best library that Bloomfield wants and needs. If some of the things that I love are in there too, like the juice bar, that would be great. But we have finite resources, and using them responsibly is so important. So it's a whole new ballgame, and it has vestiges of the old ballgame too, and we appreciate that. But moving forward, I hope that everybody looks at everything, because lots of things have changed since then. So we can look at those things and respect them.
Quite well taken. And I would say, one of the issues that I've thought a lot about is, sort of, timing is everything. And with the current climate we're in with COVID-19, and we're talking about a referendum, and there are a lot of people who are worrying about their next meal and paying mortgage and paying rent. I think a referendum is going to be difficult, and we're going to have to have our marketing and our game plan together to make it as tight as possible. But this is not necessarily the best climate to push, you know, push for a referendum. But I think it's important to Bloomfield and something that people have wanted for a long time. And there's huge value in the library. But I just think that at the backdrop, we should also be sensitive to sort of what's going on in the country and in our town, and people's concerns about their taxes and all the things that are important. But we do want the best library we can get. And echoing what Elizabeth talked about, you know, my thoughts are always, you know, the patrons and customers come first. And so what can we do to make sure that people are getting what they expect, and that people feel ownership of their library? Not that they're going into a building, but it's their building, those folks who live here in town and use the library. So I think we, Mark, I have a question. When you all met as a committee last time, how often did you meet? Was it monthly or?
We varied either monthly or every two weeks, depending on what was happening. And I think we just tried to stay open to be flexible to that. Because sometimes, you know, things move quickly, you know, in phase one. Not that there's a lot to do, but you have to make decisions more than once a month to keep things moving and to keep the consultant going. So, I mean, we might want to try a schedule of every two weeks and cancel when we really don't need to do that. That would be my suggestion initially. Because I don't think we want to, at this point, go a whole month. You know, we've got a lot of questions, a lot of things to get rolling. So I would strongly suggest setting us up for every two weeks and then be open-minded about not having it when we don't need it.
And Nancy, I'm looking to you. What do you think your timeline is on getting the notebook out? Because there's a lot of information that I think we all need to want to digest.
I think they'll be ready next week, sometime next week, if people can, you know, I'll let you know when they're ready and people can come by Town Hall and pick it up.
Just one comment, Greg, on the schedule. You know, I said that a November 2021 referendum, I really believe, gives us plenty of time to do this right. And I also feel like that would be the earliest we would want to have a referendum. You know, I don't think we want to hold a special referendum. It probably needs to be when we have a regular election. And with the COVID thing, the longer we put it off too, you know, hopefully by that time, we're past this. But the other important thing I think we need to look at is, is the phase two, and see how that timeline might influence the phase one. Because generally, if we pass a referendum, we probably have about a year of design or so, maybe a little bit less, before we would start construction. And so that's the point where the money really starts to flow. And I don't know, I guess I'm giving Nancy and the mayor some homework about our debt service. And are we in a position to start really spending money in 2022 on this project? And I know that's going to take some homework to figure out. Because if we, I mean, if we have a referendum in 2021, November, and we're really not ready to dive in and spend money on design, which is going to be half a million dollars or more, and then construction, then I think we're going to lose momentum. So, you know, I think we want to time the referendum also when we can pick up and run with it too. So just something to think about in terms of the overall cash flow.
So we will get that information for you. I know that we've done some analysis on our bands and bonds and when those mature and when we need to. So we have that. So we will definitely get that information back to the committee through the chair.
Great. Thank you. And I just, one last question to the group, primarily probably, Mark and Lois. Was there a feasibility study done? Last go-round with respect to viability of a project or location of a site?
All of the above.
Okay.
There was, it was based, just in a nutshell, the entire town was looked at for locations. So that information is in there, along with budgets related to each one of the locations and what the feasibilities were. So all that is in there, as well as, and I know it's listed in the charge, as well as input from an economic development standpoint, was in there as well.
What I'm showing you is one of the conceptual drawings from last time around. This will be in your book.
But that's on the current site, correct?
It's on the current site. There's also one for Town Hall. I'd have to find it. I think this one is the Town Hall. But yes, we have them for both. So didn't want you to think that there wasn't anything. There's not a lot behind it. It's some drawing sketches, and there's budgets for both sites as well. That'll be in the book.
I was just thinking about the cost and what we have available, $54,000.
The $54,000 was designed to update the conceptual design.
I think that's plenty of money to get us to referendum.
Perfect.
Architects will, and I'm speaking as an architect, architects will live with the budget we have for pre-referendum.
They have their eyes on the, yes, Lois.
Greg, one of the things that we didn't, we discussed briefly, but abandoned quickly, was the idea that there might be one library which would serve the whole town as opposed to two. And I don't know whether this, we are open to that thought again or not. Whether that's part of the gathering of information that the mayor would like us to do, or whether that's something that's settled already.
I'm going to stick my two cents in there and just say that if we are going to be listening to the community in this process, then the question exists.
I agree. Would it be possible for us to post a survey on the Prosser Library's website? And possibly put a notification on the town's website, as well as leisure services, soliciting feedback from the community?
Yeah, I mean, I think clearly, Prudential, that we will solicit opinions through surveys and community forums. I just don't know that we're there, you know, we need to build up to that. And so get our foundation together before we start that process. But again, I think that's going to be very important to the process, that we include the community and their input into what we decide to do. While at the same time, being realistic, I've been involved with a number of projects where when you take it to the community, you know, they want to have the Taj Mahal, because everyone wants that. But as a realistic matter, we're not always able to deliver on everything that people want to see and have. But I think it's important to hear what people, you know, their perspectives and thoughts as to what their library should look like. Ava, you have anything you want to add? I always look to you.
Not a huge amount. When I think about the project, I know everybody is, we're talking about a building. I think of the building as a reflection of what we want to do, not the building for its own sake. So the building needs to respond to the community concerns, to the staff needs, to the ways in which service is at the center of what we do. And the building is something that allows us to provide the very best service. Not that we build a building and hope that we fit into it. And I'd like to keep that in mind. And I think that making sure that the entire town, not just one subset or one part of the town, has a voice. You know, I think that there's a misconception that people drive by McMahon and don't see cars and don't think that it is as used. And that's really forgetting that there are people who don't drive, who take the bus, people who will walk within their neighborhood but are less likely to leave. It's also the only physical manifestation of town in its area. And to take that away seems to me to be something that I would be really reluctant to do. That it's, you know, we talk about, we've always talked about neighborhood schools, neighborhood as what Bloomfield is about. It's why we stayed here. I want to make sure that the library system provides all of the neighborhood groups with something that's theirs, not something that we're giving to people, that it's, the ownership is everyone. So, you know, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Maxine?
I would have.
You're muted.
Muting me back. Can you hear me now? When I slide off of it, it mutes me back. But I would concur with Ava. I think that was my primary concern, that we make sure that we have something available for individuals that can only get to a library on foot or by bus. And I think I've mentioned that before, that McMahon often looks empty, but it is not. It's bustling at times, and I think that needs to be a consideration. And I think maybe we need to really start talking about the circulation there so that we can get a better perspective of the types of things that are going on there. I also think that we need to make sure that we're servicing them, so that when we are putting surveys out, we really need to make sure we have voice from that community. And if we put a survey out and we don't get the amount of impact that we want from that community, then we have to try a next step. We can't just put it out and say, well, they didn't respond. I think their voice is vital to moving forward.
Anyone else have anything you want to add? I'm looking at the calendar here, and are people comfortable with Wednesdays as being a meeting day? And the six o'clock where? Uh, and the six o'clock work or? Okay, so.
For me.
Okay. And I know August is tough with vacations and all, but, uh, I'm thinking if we have the packets next week, maybe we can try the, the 12th of August. Does that work?
For me it does, yeah.
The 26th and we'll just try, you know, the two-week increments to see how we, uh, make out with that and hopefully in between meetings, we'll have some homework and things to do and, um, I, I'm really excited and very appreciative of everyone, uh, agreeing to participate. And I really see this as a, a shared lift between all of us and, uh, we'll be calling upon and looking for everyone to, to be engaged as, uh, as much and as often as you can. And I'm very respectful of time. We're, we're nearing seven o'clock, so I, you know, didn't want to go beyond, uh, an hour for our first meeting. I don't have anything else. I don't know if anyone does any, we can call it new business at this point. There. Being none, I guess we can, uh, entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Good. Okay. All in favor. Thank you all so much. And, uh, we'll be in touch. And Nancy, I'm looking forward to hearing from you. Let me know. I'll be the first one running. All to get my booklet.
I will. Okay. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks for taking the sign, Greg.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah. Bye.
Bye-bye.